From the National Assembly.
Ikamalama, nginu nolita Ndubongwana, ulala wekomi in English. Pardon me. My name is Ngoro Nolita Ndubongwana, the chairperson of the Committee of Infrastructure and Public Works.
We're going to open this gathering formally by singing the national anthem.
Sizowefulala, mshlangano, ngokwele ngokvula itguli sisiwe.
Can you all stand up?
That's what I mean, so. Ngosi sigeleli Afrika, malupa ganyisuponolwayo, izwa imitandaso yetu. Ngozi sigelela tina lusapolwayo, murena buluka sichabasa esu, uferisedi ntwali matwene, usibuluke sichabasa esu, sichabasa South Africa, South Africa. Edi blofan onsae mel, edidi tefan onsye, waronsye veche chepethes, va di kranse anfodre. Sounds they call to come together and united we shall stand. Let us live and strive for freedom in South Africa outlet.
Thank you, Ms. Madinese.
Nyabongwa, ngoswana matmuni se.
My name is Nolita Ndubongwana, the chairperson of the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Ikamalama, nginu nolita Ndubongwana, ulala wekomi lisemise zompa gatilisngala sisi nda.
Deployed to Parliament by the African National Congress.
Utswe, parliamente, yee African National Congress.
Coming from the province of the legends, Eastern Cape.
Ngibuya esfunda swenige, sisi ngala gozule impumala ngakapa.
Then now allow honourable members of the Portfolio Committee to introduce themselves.
Manchage, sengsonige sa amalu nguwe committee, gusie asitula.
Good morning, everybody.
Sanbonani.
My name is Samantha Graham-Morey.
Ikamalama, Samantha Graham-Morey.
And I am a member of the Democratic Alliance.
Ngilungule Democratic Alliance.
And I'm on the portfolio of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Ngise committee, nighe, le Public Works and Infrastructure.
I come from Hrafrenet in the Eastern Cape.
Ngibuya Hrafrenet, impumala ngakapa.
And to all the mothers out there, a very, very happy Mother's Day.
Kubabongwa mama ngisige, usuglo mama olusega kuld.
Good morning, everybody.
Sanbonani noenge.
Molwene. My name is Madeleine Hettlin.
Ikamalama, Madeleine Hettlin.
I am also a member of the Democratic Alliance on this portfolio committee.
Namifutse ngi ilungule Democratic Alliance, kulu leli committee.
I hail from Midrand in Gauteng.
Ngibuya Midrand, Gauteng.
And I just want to thank every single person who is here for coming to make your input into this bill. Thank you.
San ngobongwa, ngobongwa, abantabazela, pagutsinisowe tula isimfoze in siabongwa.
Sanbonani, lo kulumayo ngu matapelokasewisa, omele ntlanga noye Economic Freedom Fighters, also ndi member yee Committee Public Works and Infrastructure de suga e kimbali in Northern Cape.
Good morning, everyone.
Sanbonani noenge.
I'm Sharon Van Skalweg.
Ikamalama, Sharon Van Skalweg.
A member of the African National Congress.
Ngilungule African National Congress.
Deployed to the National Assembly.
Ngitwile in the near shamtsesu kazo longe.
I'm a member of the Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Ngilungule committee, lishale, ndeshamsesu geelize ngala sisi nda, nimese benzion pagaas.
And I'm from Uppington in the Northern Cape.
Ngibuye Uppington, nyaga tsukaapa.
Thank you very much.
Nyabongwa.
Sanbonani, ulindi wekamchobo, ngililunga le parliamente, koto kulu ngonagongo ngi ngilulunga le ANC, kisuka wazunadal, go mama namshlanje, sisi sizo stobe gile, ukubanani, nyabongwa.
Sanbona, ikamalama, ngutogo sisi, ngikwaga ngumalo, guano ngoma, wazunadal, ngilunga le Portfolio Committee of Public Works and Infrastructure, etunye ipengbo, ingata freedom path, eholo umdano rapindange.
Sanbona, ikamalama, o Elfaso Amatevula, ngilunga le African National Congress, the People's Organization. Ngibuya impumala ngakhlala, ngililunga la le committee, nyabongwa.
Thank you, honourable members.
Nyabongwa, melunga shonpegili.
Amongst us, we are joined by the councillors of the Democratic Alliance.
Togatuwesu, kukona ma councillor, Democratic Alliance.
Councillor Diane Kuti.
Councillor Diane Kuti.
Councillor Malcolm Mayfala.
Councillor Malcolm Mayfana.
Councillor Salinene.
Councillor Salinene.
Councillor Nicola Duplessis.
Councillor Nicola Duplessis.
Councillor Julie Saraby.
Councillor Julie Saraby.
We will then introduce any members of the provincial legislature.
Sizowe tula na amanyama lungu e, e ndeshamsesu funda swen.
Members of the Parliament.
Amalu ngi Parliament.
And councillors that are here.
Na ma councillor akhona lap.
But we would need someone to just write the names and give to us.
Koto agesotengwa, ngutaspala, makama abesasniga won.
We will also, if we have any, introduce leaders of the political parties.
Oma khona, amayamakwe impu, amalu ngu, makwe impu se politigi, nao sizowe tula.
We will introduce them formally.
Sizowe tula ngokwele. Siabongwa.
We are here as the Portfolio Committee.
Silapanchingye committee, ndeshamsesu.
To seek your views on the Expropriation Bill number 23 of 2020.
Ukuzozwa impuno ye, ngumtseksvivinywa number 23 ka 2020, okulumango kliwa wembala.
Which was referred to Parliament by the Department of Public Works and Infrastructure.
Owatsunye le parliamente, umnyanggo, zemese benzion pagaas, nizngala sisi nda.
And then the Speaker of the Parliament attached that bill to us.
Usomloma ngewe parliamente, besesnigeza, lomtsesvivinywa.
We then had to follow a three-phase process.
Kubesekdingya, utslande, ingobo, enisikaba, ezindat.
The first phase, we sought written submissions.
Eh, iskabensokala, nomingubeno kala, sa funage, uktula, impuno ya band e paliw.
And that phase closed on the 28th of February 2021.
Lesoskaba, agesivala, omshatwe February 2021.
On the 24th and 25th of March.
Omshatwe 24, omshatwe 25 ku March.
We held virtual meetings.
Sa bamba, imshlangano, ngoshele lo internet.
In which we listened to oral presentations.
Laposala khona isitula, ezinzwa ngomlomo.
From individuals and organizations.
Ezizwela gubandwa basmeli kaini ntlangan.
And now we are in the third phase.
Ke manisesteskabeni, esteshtat.
In which we have public hearings.
Lapos, ezizwakona isimfozo, ompa gat.
This is the fourth province that we are visiting.
Lesesfunda swen, esesine, ke eseswaga she.
We still have five more to go.
Unen tlangu isasale.
After that, we will sit as the Portfolio Committee.
Emu vora lokoswala, panchingye committee, ndeshamsesu.
Consolidate all these views that we have heard from you.
Sitidiyele, wonke, yonkimboni sitweli velakini.
Discuss and produce a report.
Siwonisane ngayo, besesipala umbiko.
That will be tabled in Parliament.
Ukuzowe tula e Parliament.
And political parties in Parliament.
Amakwe impu se politigi, asse parliamente.
Will also discuss this before it is made the final bill.
Na woge, azoltingi, dalulutabanga, pamgo silukonyazongwe.
This bill seeks to repeal Act number 63 of 1975.
Lomtsesvivinywa, klosoyawu, xijangwetza, omthesu, o, wesokliwa wembala, o zule, wena ma 63.
Of 1975.
Of 1975.
Expropriation Act, which was adopted by the then previous government, the apartheid government.
Ukumthesu, kliwa wembala, o akonyazwa, uhulumenon zule wobandwulu.
And that means it's an act that we were supposed, as the new government, to have repealed long ago.
Ukushokuti, omthesu, omeliltsinajongu, uhulumenige, omusha, omelenga beka, te sao xinchka.
Because it doesn't talk to the constitution that we have.
Ngoba, awhamisani, omthesu sekelo wetsu, esinawanjengama.
And again, this bill seeks to ensure that the uniform standards across all the expropriating authorities.
Futsikelo, omthesu vivin, futkonseki sakuti, unen tlelo, ezlinganisayo, noma ezfanaya, go wonke, banmakunya, okulala, impala.
When they expropriate property for public purpose and public interest.
Lapo beza, impala, ngwen kloszo, ompa gat, noma ngwen chisekelo, zompa gat.
It also provides that.
Upinda, usinsale ngokuti.
In instances where nil compensation is needed.
Ipiga isimo, ke lapo kudingya, kutikubenisngala pezilo.
The government may do so.
Uhulumeni, angakwaz, akwenenzilo, anngala pezilo.
You are then free to express your views in support or in objection of the bill.
Akoke, itubale, nelokutinivesi, impuno ye nyewe seka, noma yokpigi sana, nawo, omthesu vivinywa.
We are only going to give you three minutes to speak.
Sizoniga, imzuse, mithatu, nje kupela, yu kulumo.
You state your name.
Ushika malaku.
The organization that you're representing.
Ntlangan novelagu yo.
If you're just coming as an individual, you say so.
Oma ufigele, njohama ngawe tuan, nguvilin, ntlangan no intizi zukuzo.
You oppose or you support the bill?
Besuvesu, kutsu eseka, noma yapi gisana, nalomthesu vivinywa.
And the reasons thereof.
Besu beki zatu zalo.
All the views that you will be presenting to us.
Yonkimboni, nzosetwela yona.
We will be taking them.
Sizowe tata.
Feel free to express your view without fear of favor.
Sizwen kulaki, lokwesimpuno, nampandla, wesaba, nukre.
We then going to start.
Sizokala.
We will start on the right.
Sizokala ngapasa, insogula.
Those that would like to speak, can they please raise their hands?
Labafusukulmaska, pamsizan.
We're starting on the first row.
Sizokala, kula inoktal.
Okay, number one.
Number one.
Number two.
Number two.
You raise your hand for us to point at you. We can't just take you. Okay, you are number three, yes.
Number three.
And then number four, the one raising paper.
Number four, pamsi pap.
Number five behind him.
Number five, emuwa wake.
Please raise your hand for us to.
Sanmala, pramise isanla, laparula inokpa.
Okay, yes, yes, and the last one.
Beso ba, omthohosektrineni.
How many do we have now? Please don't move if we have not pointed at you.
Omunga akhona, jastalu nganyagaz.
Do we have the 10? We need one more. We'll take from this row.
Sizaza oye tuwa, ulalay, nukandilay.
Let's take it. Reminder, you only have three minutes. One more again.
Omuntuge.
Any other hand on this row?
Sekone sin sanla ngapa.
Yeah, opu diya the back, yes. So we are through with the first two rows, we're coming to this row now.
Sipadile ngolano kala, nlenisbil, anyesapinesbu elekhon.
Thank you.
Siabongwa.
Good morning. My name is Malcolm Mayfala Maseri, a councillor in Agaruleni for the Democratic Alliance. And I thank you for this opportunity. And I must stress that as we, as Parliament is looking to amend or repeal the 1975 bill with this bill, it is very important that we keep in mind the property rights of residents in South Africa. Now, one would then need to ask, how are we looking to do that? First of all, I must point out that the DA fully supports land reform and restitution. The DA also believes that the land reform is not the problem of the lack of the bill of policies. The reason why land reform has failed is because of corruption and maladministration. This expropriation bill is not the answer. The expropriation bill has been drafted to give power, government to power. And we must be careful when government has so much power that they can decide when and when not to expropriate. When one looks at this bill, it gives government that power to decide whenever they want to take your property. And when we talk about property, we're talking about the very core rights that is in the Bill of Rights under section, under the Bill of Rights under section 25. We have to maintain the basic right of the right to property as we look to draft this bill. It cannot be that government can choose, for whatever reason they deem fit, to give, to take away that right. Furthermore, I must also go to section 12, 3 of the expropriation bills, which allows expropriation of land without compensation under second circumstances. Although this is not a limited list, the section does not however address the question of mortgages that might exist on the properties in question, which is of great concern. Banks in South Africa are exposed to the tune of around 1.6 trillion in mortgages. The threat of expropriation without compensation could create a banking crisis which could collapse this economy. If expropriation without compensation occurs on a property which has mortgage, the owner of the property remains liable to the mortgage. So I have to reiterate this point, the point that I made earlier, that we have to, at all times, while we look to repeal the old bill, we have to keep in mind the basic right of South Africans, which is the right to property. Thank you.
Just before the next speaker comes in, amongst us, we have ANC councillors. Councillor Lesibampaya. Can you just raise your hand? Thank you. Councillor Ngomani. Thank you. Councillor Mtembo. Thank you.
Good morning. I'm councillor Tian Kotse. I'm the ward councillor for Ward 37 in the city of Agaruleni. I oppose this bill in its current form. I'd just like to say that private property rights are the cornerstone of any democracy. And a constitutional democracy exists where the rights of the individual are greater than the value than the rights of the state. The expropriation bill creates a situation where the rights of the state carry far more weight than that of the individual. And residents need to understand that this bill will give your title deeds over to the state. No resident will be an owner of a title deed anymore. Residents needs to know that. The expropriation bill carries a situation, so under section 2, the concurrence of the executive authority which owns the property in question is required in order for expropriation to proceed. No such right of refusal is granted to private property owners. The rights of private property owners are further undermined by the fact that the expropriation may take place prior to the finalization of compensation. And should there be any dispute about the value of the compensation, access to court for assistance may take place after the property has already been expropriated. There should be any dis, okay. So this puts the private owner at a distinct disadvantage in trying to enforce their rights to their property after it's already been taken by the state. Property that is not being used is also targeted for nil compensation under section 12, 3A. The fact that the state has the power to effectively confiscate your property, and this is not just your land, this property is any property. Can include any, any type of property. There is no clarity as to how the determination is made, by whom it is made, and what the criteria is for this clause to be implemented. Until the rights of the individuals are properly protected from the abuse by the state, we cannot support this bill. Thank you very much.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Adimedala Mola from DA. I'm objecting this bill with few pointers. Because we know expropriation without compensation, we need to consider the property rights within section 25 according to our constitution. Because we know if you can expropriate a land without compensation, it's gonna cause lot of chaos as there are properties that has been bought with the, some of the people that are bought with their own money and they are gonna lose those rights, which is gonna undermine those rights of them. And the expropriation without compensation is gonna, god, is gonna have a incertainty and unrest to our country. It's gonna cause our country to, to bend as they, as they did with our economy. Because this policy is very irresponsible policy and very dangerous to our country. And I cannot believe even the ANC can entertain this policy from the EFF. As we know, some of the policies that they've been, come from that side, we know what they've done with the, with our country. For example, even the abolishment of borders. Then we need to consider our constitution as the guidelines and the living document that we're gonna hold upon all South Africans to be protected by it. And also, this is gonna give our leading party, which is the ruling party ANC, more rights to do whatever they, they like with their land. Because you can recall in the, in modern God of a century, there's also a land that's been restrieded to the people in, as about 86,000 of them, within the section 25, which means it's doable in the current section 25 to distribute land. Then the only problem is, is, is not fast in the track because of incompetency of the ANC. If they can work on that, they can also can distribute the land within the same constitution that we have, the same section 25. May I thank you?
Good morning. My name is Bungingos in Lapo. I'm from the Democratic Alliance. I live in Midrand. I am opposing the bill in its current form, particularly around the issue of property rights. As I have indicated that I live in Midrand, there is a section, a portion of land in Midrand, which is now called Waterfall, which lay open for a very long time. And under the currently proposal, the proposal is that if the land is lying unused, it can be taken away. We know now today that that land has since been developed and the owner of the land is reaping the rewards of his land. Now, if I buy land today and do not use it for myself, but I buy it for my children for the future, I do not expect someone to come and say, this land is not being used and therefore we're taking it. Because if it's mine, it is mine. It has nothing to do with the government. It doesn't matter that you are the government. If it's my land, it's my land. We are already experiencing situations where network providers come to your land and say they want to put a mast and you can't refuse. Because again, the government is giving them the right to do that. We cannot have a situation where we cannot own and the government owns everything. We are all here aware of the Zondo Commission. We have had all sorts of horror stories from when the government has too much power. And we cannot have a situation where the government has too much power. We need to invest for our children. It is a prudent thing to do to create wealth for your children and your children's children. And we do that by investing in property. So whatever property I own is mine and it's for my children and their children. So no state has any right or should have any right to come at any time and tell my children that they are taking what I had provided for them with my sweat and blood. Thank you.
Sanbonani noenge. Sanbonani noenge. Ikamalama, ngopetroz, ngamtembo. Ngusuwangse plazini lewa, evisa yoroikral, isepapsfontaine. Ngisela, nanxomela, vatavataala, etshala nawala. Inshupera, iseseni, ngima plazini. Abowawawe, ituva skulisilela. Snominia, ngapa, 1986, etshala, ngima plazini. Abowawawe, ituva sebenza, velungo, velungo, wawashinchachinchha, hangasba, inga, velungo, esengava wala. Ayikone, male, ngana, vaitolayo, etshala, indaweni, pua, akunakesi, velungo, basvalela, manzi, amanzaya, sebenza, rai, machati, bawafsida, ayavalwa, ubafaga, masimuwa. Asaswiti, nku, nisizozu, thatapi, nisokoli, iseseni, ngima plazini. Abowawe, ituva kuka, abowawawe, itavaning, baxona, uma, mawe, ituva yaxona, awatolanga, nekse plazini. Etshala, plazini, basvalela, zingela, ezituzani, wavuligele, zutu. Seasokole, ngima plazini, strelu netu, asaswito, etolaganjalu, netu. Spigenina, vatavakulu, ngnasnetu, asaswiti, zotolaganjalu, netu. Nyabongwa.
Greetings. My name is Petros Mtembo. I am from Roikral in Broxfontaine, which is a farm. That farm, people living in that farm are very, very poor. Whereas we have been living there since 1986. Our parents have been and still are working for white employers and they are not even getting paid much. In that area, we, we are very, very poor. We even have electricity problems. We also have water issues because the white people, they close the water, so we're unable to access water at times. And they also put their own farms there by cutting off the trees. Now, we live in a farm, our parents are getting old and we do not have much. They are also closing the roads and now we have to use roads that are very far away. We need help. We trust you as a government. We need your help. Thank you.
Sanbona.
Can we, excuse me, just let him sit on a chair? Thank you.
Ikamalama, Andre Simjali. Ngibuya yoroikral, epapsfontaine. Kuliplazi, eshtala, kakulu, sibone, inkina, e nini, e mailana, nanaban, labilungo, abathenga, ngima plaz, mabafiga, lapa, sipi, sili, sana, nabu, from, guma, lendafezi. Ilendafezi, iasama, uksama, ngawonka, mantawayo, ukuti, ikonu, kusiza. Ogotwa, inkina, esgiyo, gale, gale, uunguti. Asitholi, itakiltiti, lo yamlungo, ashtela, street, utita, ikiltiti, alelo, plazila, langanga.
Good morning. My name is Andres Mjali from Roykrall, Boxfontein. We are facing many problems in that farm, because there is... since the many problems, we tried to sort the issues of the land with the land affairs, and there was no good outcome for that. And we are facing also a problem where white people closed our roads, we do not have electricity, and so by all these things, we're pleading with the government so that it can assist us. We also face a situation whereby when we have maybe an emergency, the ambulances can't access that place, because the roads are closed or either are not in good condition. So we really, really plead with the government to assist us in everything. Thank you.
Sanbona. Kamalamego Thomas Mashaba. We end up in a massive village, and we're living in Boxfontein. Oh, I'm not sure, I'm just... 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 I'm just...
Your time is up.
Greetings. My name is Thomas Mashaba. I am from Massakane Village in Boxfontein. I'm very glad to have this opportunity to air my views and be able to lay my complaints. I'm from the CPA of Massakane Village, and we have a lot of problems which are not resolved. It has been years now since we have been fighting with the white man about land. We have 2.5 hectares that were bought for us, but due to lack of knowledge, we broke the law and took land which did not belong to us. But that was because we did not have education much about the land, we're not educated about the sizes of the land. But this finally opened our eyes to see what was going on and to see what was wrong that is taking place in that land. We found out that that white man, who apparently owned the land, had obtained it illegally. And so we believe that land expropriation without compensation is necessary. My father started to work there in 1980 up to 1996. He worked in that farm for a white man. That white man eventually left when the land affairs bought the 2.5 hectares of land for us. Then, we were not told that that white man had left, we saw another one coming in and took over the land. That one had no knowledge of the area, and we were the ones who were knowledgeable about that. So according to us, we see that there was some favor that was made for that person, and there were some corruption dealings that took place. We as blacks are being discriminated, whereas we are the ones who vote every time that there are elections. It is about time that we listen to our opinions, our views, because we are not here for fun, we're not just here to waste time, we want to see change taking place. Thank you.
Thomas. I'm from Tembisa, Winnimandela. I'm a ward committee member, I'm representing community of Winnimandela. When we were in Winnimandela, we were all... 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 we were all...
My name is Homos Omphathele. So I'm saying the greetings to the parliament this morning. I'm actually a ward committee member, ward number three, we are from Tembisa, Winnimandela area. Now, we have a land that is huge in size in our area, and this is called Paul Gruger Land. So we wonder exactly, how did it come to be named like that? Because really, it doesn't belong to him, it belongs to us. And so I have been sent by the residents of the Tembisa area, they say we must ask you as a parliament to please take the land back to its rightful owners, and please speed up the process, because we've been waiting for this process for a very, very long time for it to take place. We are still waiting even now. Thank you, Chair.
Sanbona. Mande Saku Malo, Lala, Uwotedi Five. And then, since then, I was calling, so I was saying, "I'm just... I'm just..." I'm just... 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 I'm just...
Good morning. My name is Mande Saku Malo, from Ward 35. We came here to ask for the land, that the government can assist us, because we have asked for reblocking of the land, and very few has taken place since then. So we are pleading with the government to please assist us, because we have been there for quite a long time now, and we are still in pain from the government. So if you can please assist as you can, we would appreciate that. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm from Sibaka, Sixfeeling. Lina Kekansela Jeffrey Ntembu, from Ward 93, Mommo Jamistin. I'm from... 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 I'm from...
So my name is Jeffrey Ntembu. I want to say thank you very much for the opportunity to express ourselves, from Ward number 93 here in Jamistin. One thing that I want to point out is that I grew up and I was also born in the farm. So when I express my complaints, I know what I'm talking about. From growing in a farm, then I went to actually live in the rural areas. So again, I know exactly what I'm talking about when I am pinpointing problems that are related to the people who live in the rurals. From the rural areas, I went on to live in Haute. So in Haute, I found myself living in a shack, and I can tell you that life in a shack is very, very difficult. I know what I'm talking about. And we thought that... one thing that we realized is that a lot of people, members of the society, the nations itself at large, they are really trying to ask for the land to be taken back to its people. We don't have an ability to do that. So we hope that you do, and then people will end up actually being taken back to the land which is... which belongs to them. When we look around, sometimes we see a lot of farms, and we know that there are people who own some farms which actually don't belong to them, but we don't have a way to trace them. And we believe that you as a government have an ability to do that. If these people can be found, find out who the land belongs to and take it back to its people. And one other thing that I thought is that you're coming as a parliament to us was simply to come and tell us the way forward, what is now going to happen when it comes to the land issues. But it seems like we are still spinning round and round in circles. So there are a lot of people who live in Jamistin, who live in Boxberg, they are in informal settlements where life is very, very difficult. So we see a lot of this. So we are obviously hoping that the land expropriation is going to bring us a better future. Thank you.
Thank you for all the views that we have received. We are in the third row now.
I'm from... I'm from...
Can you please raise your hands, those that would like to speak?
I'm from...
Okay, number one, yes. Number two, after her.
I'm from...
Number three. Number four, number five. Number six at the back.
I'm from...
Number seven.
I'm from...
And then, on this row. Number eight.
I'm from...
Okay, number eight, yes. Number nine.
Number eight, Emma. Number nine.
Number 10, yes.
I'm from...
Okay. And this means that we are done with this side?
I'm from...
So after this group, we are coming to this side?
I'm from...
We have been joined by other councillors.
I'm from...
We have councillor Senses Beko from the DA.
I'm from...
Who is also the regional chaplain of DA in Haute.
I'm from...
Can you raise your hand where you are? Thank you.
Kalewo.
Then, we also have councillors from the ANC. Councillor Obachabalala.
Mcancelara Obachabalala wa ANC.
Councillor Musangosi.
Councillor Musangosi.
Thank you.
Kalewo.
Sanbona. Uh, lo o tetayo nguvuyani Betani. Uh, ngisuka e Wat 93 la echi mistini kunao ektoa kuse Delport squatter camp. Uh, yawarake manje si tetan genklungu because la nama manje tina si ze ngokhlupek. Uh, maybe kuzo babshungu masetan ngoba ngambela ngambela sita abashala. Makutoa bakona abantu abala ukulana makunduana. Esabanga ukulana makunduana kuchotina. Yetige labo ababanga ukulana makunduana ngoba. Indawe slala kuwona, ngaso songis kati. Kuhlala si slala si kuma private land. Ena ma utia beka, jengoba si shleli mkukuin. Sena abantuwa, ekdala beka na fro ma abantuwa nto'ulukumtana ona 24 years usalele mkukuin. Uya itinginda o ebalegi. So ngaso songis kati sela echi mistini Eguruleni kuma inbelt. Asena o umhlaba, indawe si krela yo jetina. Srela ba kuti umhlaba ma obuyele kuti tina. Banikaswa umhlaba tina siwesu untu. Ngoba yetukpe la abantuwa shopekai. Umdo nga shopeku ya mbona ifunya msono wasege kuluma ngoba lo akashopeki. But itina because of si shleli sinentlungu. Ba kuti siyakrela. Le processi ma i shexi iswe siwazuba si zule. Kulendo natise iPhone na impilo enkono jenga mtoonge engosi.
Good day. Uh, the one who speaks to you today is Vuyani Betani. I am from Ward 93 in Jameston. A place called Delport, which is a squatter camp. Uh, we are here to talk about our pain. We are here to talk about our poverty. Um, and maybe this will upset some people. Uh, but the fact is that we are people who actually compete with rats for our food. Uh, we live in private land and we have children that, uh, for example, age 24 now, but who were born in shacks. And they now need to go and make their own homes. And so we need land. I know that it isn't everyone who is in need. You can just tell some people that are not in need. Um, but we are in need. And, and so we ask for help, uh, in obtaining land. Thank you.
Dumelan. Dumelan. Uh, krebwa hile tata kubona chumiye today. Yahore ritli kubualini na parliament. Uh, sometimes oh sa duli mudiplasing. Ha okaki wabona sepe seresbona. And eh, hakiki utwa motomunshwaye mahaa are. Motlaba okalunewa mapuru. Rehuza hala tata roona. Bawrelin kamochara khadi plasi. Ki bua kelele lokula ANC Violet Tum. Happy KMT CPA yama sakani. Mapuru haru ruhela rural development ekohuboi. Lo taba nya batwa banaunso le, le rural development. Le bakaliwa, habakaki baba naya space si sesi thoka unchore. Si tushe ba thoba, le bana babor. Hakisi kumpienu habari ritliyoko palelo abaran. Kinseki ba reditia, bankutuisa wutlo kofit. Because kana kueba ni mbasa ali fasi. Lidi ngwaha seba le chosen kason. Hasima kumpienu kape bakabaya mamopele haru namo democracy. Kape basenseba tagore bolele la hori karinka lihasi. Bahai shori ya shootleh. Ridula le bana moten khadi pleke sedinyani. Kahona moka isangwana hakokoting. Ulimukara kaphlasu ni be 2.5 hectares. Krela kamochore le banzika ten. Rea talaroona, simorayot alambatuwa bantso. Yano, haritigota hori, roona ritliyala hori. Ibele totalu ridiehetsi. Senkante koya kamala. Banna baba ruelle massimoaridika hanyeditia rukwezi rekwezi kimibidi abo. Rona harina moritwanti. Kinerere, bilie ayemehala kanci dirankabona kupa lamente rea libor.
Good morning, my name is Violet Tum. I would like to thank you for this opportunity to come to talk to the members of parliament. When you are not living on the farms, you won't see what we see because we live there. I am talking as a member of the ANC, also representing Masaka. When you send rural development to talk with black people, you will make them fight. Because rural development does not give us enough space to live with our children. When the people who took the land took it, they cannot come back now and tell us what we must say and what we must not say about the land. We are given very small places to live with, with our children. And that is because there are many of us, but we need more space and the land is there. To those with farms, sorry, to those with, who are dealing with the bill, we are pleading with you to hurry up, please, and to give us back the land. Thank you.
Uh, dumelan. Yaimimo, keta bulitovijani. Kwat committee, kijogoten bis, kowini Mandela. Uh, tabaye. Kithwa ke na ngomshomu ngayube kaba redena, negirke oru. Ngabe sheetwami la gbe yurimorberi sheteru kulunya gozwar na. Konje, ke ma flama kailor estirajier. Kalba kalawor, kelo thomaleri. Uh, le faslar nasonje, derikishi yor, mthomu, lelebo shiwe. Keta beyungwe mpiasko. Reyners ba kuboni ma geten, ana roya kai. Uri alga si kule or wat committee, kuagilong onokwa, olaa barkonal plasin ejei lori. More longer onalabatwadori, they've been there for more than 56 years. Marlohuonu, yano ochale tunufka moobo naruno, kamushanditama i. Ana yeri biakai. So parliament rohopela or, derutushin. He kata ba ea land without compensation. Kaytwelli lenkaitlen kaspeti. Mogi jongona onokwa win Mandela, gueka ya, or mthomu ka obudor anjwalu. Plus minus 300 people. Banu jlablik e one. More yelongor ibiliona akoka talakemikal toilet idono weyuka naputiti. So regar gavatad, renyaga ma fe. Rohopela tushu. And then sele mthomu ngaylori ta hona. Rohopela gapa gape kaba kalawor, obulala kokupe. Gaye imunitariwa gavots. Ililelelo gavots orna, kumukomufun kusonjor ushumishiu. Renobarila gerifadar diadilo sometimes, ri diadilo, re lebalakoka balance. Oh kudoroke, naikiluso kiafsonje. Kijokel, uh, KZN. And then otbomu sonjuki ke berakalagai, gaga outen. Then gagea oberekalakagao ten. Akukonu ozwaror na gavotsi, malalo oberekagayuan. Kemo yor korupshino ujale fokaba kalawor. Ootuwa gaila ajoga natala, kafikaka kujatuvijani kanyo gobe. Berakalatuvijani kaba kaba lokupe. So nyagantomhudor lelelele. Uh, rohopela land without compensation. Gue mthomu ngabe tumbe viga ofida bolakau. And uh, yungushi parliamenterizor na batwobana arasokor. Onamukoba lamu jejelurimu. Lo hua le dorinale 20 years. Le afishadara batwa 50 years oroke. Mo agenokoshitelele ne koperelitama i. And then tuiwesonjima idirekile malop. So reganirutushin, nerifelife lo. Yeyalor mutualikuwa ulplasi, kexala julumulplasing. Aljulumulplasing, kaba kalawor motu, gavane charite, tove.
Good morning, I am Tabuditovejani. I am a ward committee member and I'm representing Tembisa Winni Mandela section. Um, what I have to say is that the bill should be started on very quickly. When you say that land should be sold, we are not sure what you mean by that. Because where will we go when the, when this happens? For example, there is a farm called Jay Lori and there are more than, there are people who have been there for more than 56 years. But then somebody will come tomorrow and say they must go and where will they go to? We are asking for your help as parliament. We are asking for expropriation to happen quickly. There are, there's a place where there are plus minus 300 people living in one place and this is problematic because they need space. So we are saying we need your help. Um, for example, if a person from KZN is working in Haouting, the process should be looked at carefully to see how land will be given to such a person. Because he comes from a different province but works in another one. How would he be able to get a land in a different province? So taking these into account, we are asking for your help to get the land back and can this please happen quickly? Thank you.
Just before you speak, we have been joined by two councillors from the EFF. Councillor Fannis Beko.
Councillor Fannis Beko wa EFF una loro nakajeno.
Councillor Georgina Mashiane.
Limu councelara Georgina Mashiane.
Thank you.
Kalewo.
Uh, sanbona. Sanbona, ukama Frans Ngomani, ward councillor 21. Uh, la ngizotrela, i, ngzokuluma ngelend. Ilendu onasa iPhone, mokshe shisa, ku dala skuluma ngai. From 2016, inketo nguo ward councillor still nama nsa kuluma ngai, ngelend. In, la gule hotlingi presentagu, uh, from Mcaus to Angela. Every weekend, mkukiyasha because abantu ngendla bachele ngayabache la ngakati. If uya manje, manje, kuluma manje, lastu kushelive. Isor kushefive. Because abantu ngendla bachele ngayabache ngati ingolube. So if i, i, ilendu ngasheshisa, besi ngachi abula akul. Umu uya foot manje la, uzotoli zinyoga nganjia. Because abantu ukese ba ufuna, but ngendla rokutumhlaba banao, base basijonjer ukese kumaspar, ena bapatala. Ena ayukutia bafunukpatala, bayashoki matu, bafunukpatala ukese, patu umhlaba auku. La si slala kumani, mani ngpelti. Ukokati slata, funu wakalipemeshin ku, ku land ona. Just ukatu slata lisu so weyka mkukuin. So if si ngasheshisa ngelend, besi so chabula akul, tinasingama ward councillor. Uma ngendla mkukuin, nokutini ward councillor akubona gal, because ngendla abantu bachele ngai, uma ngendla ba utuzukutaku. Utuwi councillor amara, buona gal, ngendla si shile ngai. And da one, torakuna 150 mkuku, minyango i ganji, party city, sinet democracy. Please, si kera i, ilendu ndabelendu shexi se, nismi ngaita, nyawo.
Good morning, my name is Frans Ngomani. I am a ward councillor from Ward 21. I am here to request that you quicken the land, um, the land issue. We do want the land and you want it now. I was selected in 2016 as a councillor and we're discussing the same issue that we are still discussing even now. If you look at the place from Mokwadu to Angela, where I am, where I reside, there are squatter camps there and they keep on facing fires. For instance, last week we had 11 shacks burning down. Yesterday, there are five because people are all squashed together. Could you please quicken the process of, um, returning the land to the people? People are connecting electricity in illegal ways because we do not have electricity. Should we do, should we get the land and electricity? We will be able to pay the municipality. If we need to cut a tree that is about to fall on a shack, we are supposed to request permission to do that. Could you please quicken this land process? There are about 150 shacks in one area. We really do need you to quicken this land issue. Thank you.
Thank you very much. The name is Lisiba Mbiya. I'm from the African National Congress. I'm also a councillor in the city of Eguruleni. Tinasiso esenyama si kalela isole to ela tatwa abamshop. So much have our people been singing for the longest of time. And there's an understatement as to, on the, on the issue of taking. This land was not just taken, it was ruthlessly dispossessed. Our people were displaced, their dignity was stripped of them. And this is a call for the restoration of dignity. The manifestation of the 1913 and the 1917 or the 1975 X63 of the Expropriation Bill is a manifestation of the poverty that our people remain with today. And they speak about how they are contesting food with rats. And we think the situation is normal. It is for this reason that the ANC supports expropriation of property and land. And it is not just the expropriation because no compensation at time can be calculated to be compensation. We are calling for the expropriation of land without compensation. We are also saying that for the ANC, this is about the redress and of the historical injustice and the dispossession of black majority. It is also a vital opportunity to unlock growth, redistribute assets and promote socioeconomic transformation. The ANC's program provides a way to address the land question and build productive assets to our people. We are inspired by the African land, African lands claim of 1943, which was adopted in the ANC conference, which affirms the ownership of land and also occupation. We are inspired by the Freedom Charter of 1955. It is for this reason that we want to make this concrete proposal that we repeal, uh, we repeal the, um, uh, the, the Expropriation Bill of 1975. Uh, I think it's X63 if, if I heard you well, chair. And also that we support the 2020 Expropriation Bill, that we call for the establishment of a capable state institution that will ensure effective implementation of all the, the provisions of the bill once it had, it has been enacted. Third, that we also call parliament to establish an oversight committee on the implementation of the expropriation process post the enactment. We further call upon government to speed up the land release program in all its facets, for residential purposes, for agri production and so forth. We reaffirm our call by the African National Congress to proceed with the determination of expropriation of land without compensation. Thank you.
Uh, thank you very much. Uh, this is councillor Obachabalala here in Wat 35. Um, now, we are demanding now a land. An expropriation of land without compensation. Previously, we, we do support, but now we demand now. Uh, we are tireless of supporting. Uh, this matter has been discussed in all levels of spheres of media. You knows, the parliamentists, you knows that. Uh, even you in parliament, you know about this matter, but nothing has been done up until so far. Uh, our government is always trying to play a clean slate. Now is a term of no clean slate. Because you want to see yourself internationally as the best government of the world. No, we don't want that best government of the world. You can be a best government of the world, provide that the people that you govern are happy. If they are unhappy, therefore, why you want to play a clean slate? So now, like we go to the elections. There is a, you know, national elections, governmental elections. Let us now come with a system whereby we are saying, now is the elections or is the voting day for land. So that we can see the reality that how so many people who said, let lands come to the people. How many of them? And those who are saying, no, how many of them? And then the results would be a final. You'll never be, you know, under pressure. Just let us vote, come one day and vote for the land and get the land back, you can see, Amanda. and get the land back, you can see, Amanda.
Okay. Naki, IV, kitsoako, ki ward committee. Kitlobuwela, tabaya, hunalidi kerek, kinalipo mono. Hunalidi kereketsingata hahulu, hakitsidi huayakamu lauteo. Erenalu onahonaje, wale fazi. Eh, ne kinalipo no yahuri, hukava joang hadikerere, di ka kedi bewe pleking ei wani. Hovani, di kerekaka hara, betsi hahu, ki buona ekarengdi batla di sitisa, besewezi ya buchaba hahu. Hovani, sedili ngata hahu. Iwileki buela hara di wote hahulu, hovani hunalidi wote sedin, morisa hunu hori, resewezi hande de. And then he, ewi yavu bedi, ki buel, ki, eh, hunalipo no ekinalio na mole, as eh, ward committee under healthy, mole tliniki nyaro na ya Ward fifty-nine, erenalu matata. Mu ahou wa tenkwa hali. And eh, ki buona usa bewa kasi la ilin hande. Hovani, u, ahu epla, zila ya, moza ma nditexi hahulu, ba tuwayali mala mou, eh, baba ngiwile basoka hala. Ena hunaliba na, ba fitba, tamo tliniki livona, rekavale kutata na ku, eh, hulu kapwenyani, lohona ichi hushesizwe libota. Ka onama tata onao, hovani, ipla zila hahulu. Joali, nerukupa, hovani, eh, rebeli, di kerek, hunalike rekaka murayona hape. Reke rufu espesise ulis ona, huayakamu lauteo wa eh, budulu. Eh, hohung hape, eh. Kisara, itse de, mbasewa di wileki tla di khautsa, akshatla ki apil. Fela rekupa, fela hori, rebelimi ahou emi itle, ale fazi.
Good day. I am IV Chole. I am a ward committee member. My vision is that there are too many churches and I wish that these churches could be placed in one area, because they disturb social activities and we cannot work properly, because there are too many churches all around the place. Also, my other point is that under the health issue in Ward fifty-nine, the clinic is an old building and it's not properly placed. It is close to the road where there are too many taxis. As a result, uh, people are involved in accidents and also recently, the wall was crashed into, because the area, the clinic is too close to the road. There is also a church behind that and I would like to request that we have that area to use. On the other issues, eh, the people have already spoken about them, so I won't go into them. I would just like to plead for buildings that we can properly work in and also that we can have the land back. Thank you.
Good morning. My name is Olga Machova. I'm a councillor here in Eguruleni, representing the ACDP. The ACDP, as the ACDP, we acknowledge the reformation and restitution of land question. The question, however, is not why, but how. We have consistently said that expropriation without compensation is not the pinnacle to the land question. Property rights must be protected, because a failure to protect property rights and to issue title deeds to property owners destroys the value of such property. The ACDP is of a view that, from, from a legal and constitutional perspective, it is not necessary to amend section twenty-five of the Constitution. Enhance draft this expropriation bill, as the Constitution caters for land reform quite adequately when read with the existing restitution of land act. It protects property rights and also recognizes the need for the restoration of rights to those who have been dispossessed of their land. The problem lies with implementation of the existing policy and legislation. This failure to implement is due to mainly incompetence, mismanagement and corruption, particularly in the Department of Rural Development and Land Reform, which was highlighted by both Khalima Mutlante High Level Panel reports and as well as the Special Investigation Juror Report into the Department of Rural Development and Land Reform. What needs to happen is to root out those incapable corrupt officials and state departments who failed over the last twenty-six years to restore the land to its rightful owners within the bounds of the law and in particular the South, the Constitution of South Africa. From the ethical perspective, we support orderly land reform and the restitution of land with compensation. The ACDP would like to emphasize, to emphasize the need for fast resolution to the land issue as land grabs escalate around the country. We must support as many South Africans as possible to gain access to land with title deeds while protecting all property rights and ensuring that just an equitable compensation is paid to any land that is expropriated. The ACDP is committed to strengthening access to security and, and of tenure as well as the freedom of to acquire, to utilize, to rent and sell property, including land. We believe that it is important to...
Your time is up.
We do not support this appropriation bill. Thank you.
Dumelang, vitola kati Selina Budibe, I'm a ward committee, kidula mou, Ward ninety-three. Eh, nakeli Selina, Ward ninety-three, kedu la mukukun, from ninety-four, edula mukukun, hosna zule pile. Le fazi kala ba, tanhobaki hali, kedu la mole ba na bagona, ba na bagona ebri ba tseteleba na. Harina mutlakasi, harina meti, ritzonaliba twadiplasin, skahati ba tshuva, ba twadu yandi plasin abana nix. Ekare, kedu lakaradi tropo tsepe, djimiste ni lipospe, kedi rikentse in between. Ma hau kasha ba muri du lande, inkari kidukuluwe. Kita madibitwa, ba tse, di roto, tse, hulu fela tse kana. Ba na bagona ba safara ra safar. Ma hadili motse di yautu di vautu ra hona, ro, vautu la ba twadu le di tlo tseko dim. Ena islamatoma, retama, rebulala, ritzonaliba. Kena norma, shoma alitama, litalika feedback, eh, bituro, le fazi kilere, reletroze, le dule di pleking, tse right. Nyabon.
Good day. My name is Selina Budibe. I live in Ward ninety-three. I'm a ward committee member. I live in a shack and I've been living there since nineteen ninety-four. There has been no improvement in the living situation since then. Uh, I have children, my children have even now got children of their own. We have no water, no electricity. We live between two towns, but where we actually live, the place is very bad. We live with rats, which, um, is very unhealthy. When the time comes for voting, we vote, but there is no change in our situation. We actually thought that you coming here, you would be bringing us feedback or a way forward. We just ask for the land back. Thank you.
Dumelang ba, hoo. Livizo ke tebo, se fane ki molobo. Kito a ward two, Ridfontein, iplasin. The challenges, tava twadiplasin, didukwile bomelo ndati. Hovloka alor kineki di peti. See, rodin klaya di bedi fela tse kela ku akazona, klaya pele, ba tsoadi, ba setlisa on the farm Ridfontein ka nineteen sixty-two. Basloka he, si, both of them obanali, over sixty, ya sevi, si plasin eh. Basloka si basnalit. And, kajeno, ka two, twenty twenty-one, rinseri plasin eh. Hahu li, tu di challenges, semuli kizo opisantla. Harina, divisi tse from the department. Department of Healthi, ba kete le, si, tu revisita last year, just before lockdown, kamachi. Harina sanitizer, harina maze, harina mutlakasi. Akse huaka tava sau di pitla trin, habana ba hula, hui talanka bo, kina klaya pele. Kina bube li, ki akopa, sela tela. Ka two thousand and seven, national government, ewilareka poshin tsepe, di zaplasin eh. Poshini ewi ki merlinde. A year later, government, national, afanaka lease. The thirty years, rinseri de mo, haria kara consult. Limose fitile, resapplication of Department of Agriculture. Rekopa osevi, sahona missevi tse rasen. Hausa na khauta. Banava ba tla osevisa. Hovatla obula, eh, port, hahuna du. Hovatla obula pigar, hahuna du. Renalohom se duendi, renalip, oh, ki matata fe, ki matata. Grazing area, erenalu ona, kitle, etla opisantla. Joali, kabuchusu yani ki akopa, ki kopa di department. Se shia vanila twadiplasin, please, kono nitro revisita, kilitro uka di challenges, erenalezo, kialibo.
My name is Debohomoloto. I'm from Ward number two in Ridfontein. Eh, this is the farm, so I would like to obviously start off by passing my greetings, eh, to our parliamentarians. The, the, when it comes to the challenges that are dealing, that are related to land, I don't want to repeat this. You have already heard a lot about this, so I'm just going to mention two things, eh, which I am very much worried about right now. In the year nineteen sixty-two, our parents were evicted from one of the lands in which they lived and they, it's now been over sixty years where we don't even have any service at all. And these parents of us have died and they died poor. In twenty twenty-one, um, we, here we are, still living in this very farm. There is basically nothing, no progress, nothing is happening there. We are having so many, many challenges that are actually giving us a headache. We haven't had visits from the department, which deals with lands. And there was one time when we received a visit from the Department of Health, but I wouldn't say things have improved, because when we look around, we don't even have sanitizers. We don't have even electricity. So the relevant departments are not visiting us. That, that is point number one. Now, my point number two is an appeal that I would like to make and I would like to state that in the year two thousand and seven, the government actually purchased eh, two portions of this farm in which we live and a year later, they gave out a lease, a thirty-year lease. We're not benefiting from it, but we are still in the farm at, at the moment. And last year, we submitted some applications looking for work. We submitted these to the Department of Agriculture, because we've got children who need to work, who are looking for work. Some of them would like to do poultry, but there is no space, there is no land to conduct this kind of a business. We've got twenty cows in the land where we live right now, but gra, grazing land is giving us a headache. There is no space, so we are not managing eh, as, as far as that is consent. So please, this is an appeal that eh, the department that is dealing with the lands must please come, visit and see how they can actually render us the needed help. Thank you, Chair.
Thank you. From all those that have presented their views. As we have indicated, we are true with this side, we are coming to this side. So any hand in this line? Number one. Number two. Number three. Number four, at the end. Number five, there at the back. Number six. No, we're starting at the back, we're starting at the back. Yeah, number six, yes. Number seven, you. So there is no other hand here? Or, yes. Yes, Leba. How many do we need now? Okay. So we are in this line. Let's start here in front. One. Two. Three. Four. Yeah, we will stop. Kalogi said, we need four. We needed only three, not four. Oh, okay. We will start with you, Buti, when we come back. Remember, three minutes, you introduce yourself. You tell us whether you support or you are opposing the bill. We have been joined by another councillor from the DA, Councillor Golden Maduna. Can you raise your hand where you are?
Okay, thanks. Ikamalam, homzai fanning, wangango, yespo ngo. Eh, I'm the ward committee in Ward one oh one. First and foremost, I would want to say I support the bill, but there's a portion that I disagree with. The land must be compensated. Eh, the land must be expropriated without compensation. The reason for this is that this land was taken criminally so to our own African people. So we can't compensate criminality eh, in that sense. Eh, the Freedom Charter states very clear that the land eh, shall be shared amongst those who work it. Who worked this land? It's our own African people and black in particular. So Chair, we must not compensate criminals, because these were criminals who criminally taken the land from our African people. Eh, Chair, I support eh, the bill, but without compensation, nyabon.
Good morning. My name is Zephaniah Gwanya. I'm a ward committee member from Ward one and the rest was in English. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Firstly, the EFF would like to send our revolutionary Happy Mother's Day to the mothers today. Chapasin, we do not understand why Parliament is spending money on the process, on this process, when there is a process to amend the Constitution. And after amending the Constitution, this committee must then bring legislation that is in And after amending the Constitution, this committee must then bring legislation that is informed by the Constitution. We made our submissions in two parliamentary public hearings on the land question. And we told members of Parliament to go and amend the Constitution to allow for expropriation of land without compensation into the custody of the state. But since you are here, you must know that as EFF, our position remains the same. We want our land to be expropriated without compensation. That is the only way we will address colonial land dispossession and the legacy of apartheid. We did not give Parliament a mandate to find ways to pay for land that was stolen. Our land is not a commodity and should not be for sale. The Expropriation Bill is an unnecessary distraction, and we see it as a way to hijack the real struggles of Black people and will not solve the challenges of land. The money that is available to pay for land must be given to Blacks, to Black small-scale farmers. Black people in South Africa need their land to farm, build houses, and build businesses. And the Expropriation Bill is not going to help us in doing any of this. No legislation is above the Constitution. As the EFF, our support remains in the National Assembly, that together as the ANC, we must amend the Constitution. It is not illegal, the Constitution itself allows for it to be amended, so that then we take all this land to avoid all this hurt that our people are going through and these horrible stories they are narrating to you. And we say to the people of Papsfontein here in Katla Hoom, in, in Ekuruleni, EFF in Ekuruleni will come and have a tea with that white man that is abusing you and will address him appropriately. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, our parliamentarians. My name is Mukoka, I'm a farmer in Emfuleni eh, local municipality. I represent farmers who mostly are dealing with grain production and also beef. And all, most all farmers in our Sidibane district, who are the plus eh, farmers. This, we appreciated eh, uh, the bill. We support the bill, expropriation without compensation. But with consideration that first, the land that belongs to the government must first be distributed. And then secondly, uh, the land that should be taken. It should be that land that is for development, eh, not just eh, willingly, nearly taking of the land, because we will be disturbing the food security in that regard. So priority must be the land that is lying follow. And also the, our department or our Parliament must come with the sizable land that every farmer, especially the commercial farmers, they've got thousands and thousands of eh, hectares. Those hectares that are lying follow, those are the things that we should target. There must be a limit, a size of the land. No farmer should have ten thousand hectares when nobody has, or when we Blacks don't have land. So that consideration must be, must be considered very well. We are charged with food security as farmers in this country. I suppose parliamentarians are not farmers. They are not charged with the responsibility to produce food. But we are, as farmers, charged with that responsibility. Therefore, we taking the risks on our own to complement the responsibility of government. Government's responsibility is to make sure that there's food security in eh, our land. And we have taken that responsibility. But we are getting very much disappointed by the department. We need title deeds, that's the bottom line, that will make us, as farmers, to go forward and to be eh, in, 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 eh, and to ensure food security. As we are going to the banks and to the agribusinesses, we go there on our own risks. But survey, you know, eh, eh, re, 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 resavavisah, our government's responsibility. We take big loans and then repay them within six months. That is difficult, and we don't get eh, a forthcoming eh, support from this government of us, that we are carrying on our shoulders. This is very hard for us. We have been struck by, 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 by the disaster recently in December, and we don't see any person coming forward. All our crops were wiped off because of the big eh, flats. But we don't get assurance that come the, the next season, we will be on the land. We've got to carry that responsibility alone. All what we need, dear parliamentarians, give us title deeds, that's the first point of departure. We will see, you'll have to come with a modality. We don't want this lease agreement, it's not for our favor. You cannot commit yourself on a thirty-year period lease agreement. The banks and other agricultural institutions, they, 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 they ignore that. They don't like that eh, asset security. And we have set news, set news, almost all farmers are suffering from chronic, treated diseases because of the stress. Unfortunately, yesterday we were burying another farmer. But the bottom line, my dear eh, 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 parliamentarians, we, the people, we need title deeds for the land that we are occupying currently. Then we can, we can, we can go forward.
Eh, Sanbonani, my name is Prince Nlovu, from Haidelbeck. Um, I'm the so-called small-scale farmer, and I hate that. Thousands and thousands of hectares, Tina, seven, seven, one point one hectares. Meanwhile, I support ipili utipase, um, chabu bele bandwin. Eh, this will help us, I'm sure, manje, iskillsnaso, we can do it, we can farm. So, benkulu ti Parliament, iisabense, ipushu uti umchabule bandwin. I thank you, aluta kontinyoa.
Good morning, my name is Prince Nlovu, from Haidelbeck. My, it pains my heart to see that thousands and thousands of people own thousands of hectares when we suffer because of not having land that is entitled to ourselves. So we plead with the government to assist us in this regard, the rest was in English. Thank you.
Dumelan, eh, libisolaka ki Porinzani eh, from Sidibane District eh, under Emfuleni municipality. Eh, ki eme mona representing the farm dwellers occupiers. Eh, we don't understand, hori, why does the government introduce or design the Department of Rural Development and Land Reform? Because it seems like that department eh, eh, designed it to eh, eh, prochromate eh, oseva a certain farming activity only, whereas there are people who are suffering Badulanco Plasimo. This, as, as the organization, eh, Yadi Farm Dwellers and eh, Occupiers, we support the bill. However, we are saying, let us first start with the land that is available. Because god bless in that we are on a land, they are government. And we were told, or we are going to benefit through the processes. Sorry, those who are giving, those farmers must give Batubana Badulandi Plasim job opportunities. But we don't see that happening. We are also saying, even the issue of one hectare, one household, it's been yabwe, yabwe, but it's not being implemented. Clearly, we are taking it serious to say, the government is, doesn't take Batumakilaba 20 plus in serious. So we support the bill, but we say, let us not come here to support the bill for the sake of other benefit. We are saying we must also be priority and benefit from this bill. Kalivo.
Good day, my name is, is Porinzani. I'm from Sidibane District, under Emfuleni, and I'm representing the farm dwellers and occupiers. Um, we support the bill, but we say that we should start with the land that is available. Farmers must give job opportuni- job opportunities to farm dwellers. And it also seems that the government doesn't take our lives seriously. Uh, we need to have the land back so that we can, it can benefit us. Thank you.
Good day, my name is Kujjo Masiro from Tembisa, Ekuruleni Watfor. I'm here representing the people who are staying in the informal settlement. I'm saying to you, Chair, we are living in a world where we are having many different kind of diseases. As a parliament, you must go around the location and check how the people in the informal settlement are. Because we are grouped in a very small piece of land. And during the pandemic, people were expecting us to keep social distance. Were expecting us to sanitize. Were expecting us to clean, to wash our hands. How were we going to wash our hands when we don't have wood? How were we going to, to be safe from the diseases when we were using one toilet? Three hundred people using one toilet. We are staying in a shack, we are staying next to a toilet. It's a kitchen, it's a toilet, it's a bathroom, everything at one place. So we are supporting this bill, we are saying, Chair, please, give us land. It's very difficult because we are staying in informal settlements, close to a land that is not used. Open land. If you can go to Tembisa now, there are a lot of churches there, from our fellow brothers and sisters from eh, Zimbabwe and Mozambique. They are occupying that land just to use it for, for, for their church. And we are there, we are sitting in a small place, occupying eh, shelters, eh, these shacks. So on the other side, we are here wasting time and wasting money. We were supposed to be here saying, how can we help this minority to get a land? Not us being here asking for land. We are doing the opposite of what we are not suppo- we are supposed to be doing. So Chair, we are asking to you, eh, please, give us our land back. We are asking as Africans, give us our land back, so then we can discuss many things later, instead of coming here asking for land from the people who have stolen it from us. Thank you, Chair.
Good day, my name is Musankosi. I'm a Ward Councillor from Ward forty-two. I'm here to request for land. The bill really looks good, but it's so difficult to be a councillor in the squatter camp, because there are about three or four families living in a small space. And when they happen, when the shacks begin to burn, they all get burnt and you can't even assist. There are eight families using one toilet, there is no space, we need space. The re-blocking process has begun, but there is no land. We accept everything that is being said here, thank you.
Good day, my name is Mr. Resimadi Makubele. I am from Ward one oh three in Palm Ridge. I'm here representing a portfolio from the FPO. I'm here to talk about churches. They promised us that um, after they have fixed the house, housing issue, they would give churches subsidy, just like the houses. They promised to make auctions so that they could sell spaces to us as the churches. How can they sell church, church land though? Because the churches are within communities where there are houses, and people cannot live without churches. So when people are given subsidy, churches should also be given subsidy. Thank you.
Banengi aba ofnawu umchabu, koto ana ba utoli. Manje, siyabawo kuti, na ba nbatkalalele, koto, no, 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 no minister we, tutoguti tiza wachu kuti. Eh, ama plas ngata wakipawo, ngyangsai kumuli namba ya kwanagatpe wui one thousand five hundred. ama plas ngata wakipago, nyangsa ikumuli number ya kwanagatbe gui 1,500. And then, abanda beba applyile beba ifuli 10,000. Logo giabonisukutu lomshaba sia ufuna. So tinasia vuma ukuti, lomshaba auze, marama auza, uyebanwi. And then, kotu, ningavala masimu nafaka bandu. And then, abantu abo bazu kula wa inshala, ngoba masimu pele n'awali, se vatlala kwa. Stogos.
Good morning. My name is Bongani Mapena from Waddo, Waddo. I represent farmers from there. We do support the bill, but we don't want the bill to be taken by the government. Because if it's been taken by the government, it will cause chaos. Why should we have to pay? Because if we pay, it's like we are paying the thieves themselves regarding this bill. So, we ask that the land be returned to its rightful owners without compensation. Another point is that, let us not close farms. Because if we close farms, like you'll find a situation where the government is closing farms in order to put people to occupy that particular space. So this is bad because where will the food supply come from if we are closing the farms? And another one is that even Tawo Tawo Tisa spoke about this land expropriation without compensation, but no more progress has been made so far. So, in conclusion, we'd just like to plead with the government to kindly support us to give our land back. Thank you.
Revolutionary Christians, Happy Mother's Day, all mothers present here today. What the Economic Freedom Fighters wants is the constitutional amendment that will make the state legally permissible to expropriate land without compensation. This land must then be placed under the custodianship of the state, which will administer and redistribute equitably to all South Africans for residential and productive use. The underlying principle is that land is a common natural endowment that everyone must be able to recite and produce on and satisfy the spiritual requirements for. The Economic Freedom Fighters is waiting for the amendment of the constitution before we can talk on this bill. Because there are things that we are not satisfied with. I thank you.
Sanbonani. Ikama u Jochina Ogomashiane, kantela Eguruleni, ngapandla ikutwenbule EFF. Nam sanje, ngizovu melana, futi ngikuzelele, n'ugutatu ogomshaba, ngapandla wesn'apezelo. Situ lomshaba ma utatu ngapandla wesn'apezelo. Ukuti layo male ebeyo sebenza u'ngapezela, abanikazbu lomshaba. Itati isegenziswe ukuti isapote ama businesses ama ngani? Isapote futi ena avalimi abasa fufusa. Ngituniwela ukuti, manisho ukuti, lolushelu, lukubuiswa ogomshaba, malusheshen. Ngoba si kulumanje indawo e emautzwe, e free state eswenziswa esizwe simnyama. Ukuti ithandaze, n'uguti itwase, ivaliwe, gen ngaje yomlungo oyedwa. Otii indawo yaké. So abantu abo abamnyama, abakon ukuti baprektize e amasigo abo. No ma bayenza amasigo abo guleyondawo. Gakoke situ lomshaba ma ubuye zanzin zabanu. Giabongasla.
Good morning, good day. My name is Jochina Mashiane. I am a councillor from Eguruleni, under the EFF. I'm here to support and emphasize that land expropriation should be done without compensation. Then, that money which was to be used for compensation should be used to support small businesses and small-scale farmers. I'm here to request that we hasten the land issue. Land restitution should be hastened. Black people are facing problems because they are unable to practice their rituals and cultural practices because there are white people who are preventing them from doing such. Could you please hasten the procedure of returning the land to the people? Thank you.
Siabonga, ngibongasabetetile.
Kalé wo, wa shaba wiling.
Our number one is, yeah, you.
Wabili wa Ronakim.
And then, number two, yeah.
O'wedi.
You raise your hand for us to point you. We don't just point anyone who has not raised their hands.
Oklamewa pamisela to ohorosu pe.
Okay, we go to the third row.
Mulianwa Brarou.
Okay, it comes, number three, we're here. Number four, next to you.
Obaroulu Aboné.
Since there's no other hand, and number five.
Obushanu.
Number six.
Obutilela.
Number seven.
Obusupa.
Number eight.
Oborobedi.
Nine, ten.
Obokubong loa bulishu. Loa eleven.
I think we will have twelve, and this is the last group.
Greetings to all you, to all. Sons and daughters of this soil. Maybe I should start by raising the spirits of my forefathers and all of us. This issue of land has been an issue for quite a long time and we've been talking and promising every now when we have meetings and everything, but nothing's come to effect. I support the expropriation of land without compensation. And I could add on top of it that I don't see any reason why we should compensate people who have stolen land from the African people. Where all of us are staying, where the blacks especially are staying, you'll find out that the people are not living as the Freedom, the Bill of Rights says, you have a freedom of life. But where we live our life, the graveyard is better than there. The people that are resting on the gravesites are better than us living here. So, sons and daughters of the land, let us support the expropriation of the land without compensation. I thank you.
Can we please get the name?
Dumela, kallbizokis Chava Mulotana. Ki di miselwa meka ofela, let me say Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers. I'm coming from Edflacht Rivers, Adamitwa. Hebelele botatas is from 2020, and 2021. Plotter six edflacht we by neighbor Huti, origide black American thing, and it was old school day, was called, was a primary school. And then, renalabato ba holeba du lang in that land. So land is about two hectare. We by neighbor Huti, arona elin lho oladla, le maponisa alikifesa batu. We by gilagachonore, kitole tuso, ki fonile bojshen, ki buo form land reform. Kabakatusha ki bundate kiila, mozwa keba EFF. Baswadi renalabotata holeba when it comes to the land. And then, renalé, ha holeba hula okashesho ka, ka difaminga mona. Baswati kifetswa, ka mokati difaminga mona. Mahua aretsori hanu. Even now, renalé cases itu, zelurin. Baswati shala ki mahua, baswadi babona basloka lamono, ba hulia lamono, ba kena skolomono, baswadi ba basaliyo, mahua abatebele. So, ra, dirukoba tuso ha holeba hula ka mona repilangatinkamo. So, la, ki na so, ki na lebo matetyes, ki dula plekenyon, and se ki dula yonamolo yonajwale. And then, se relwana, lho hua de na, nta libisi kambarona obatla reitswe. Hebe ki tingu romella ba toba hai, ba toba putu, ba toba kolomaka monu ori. Here place is the place for the farc, is the farc's block. So, as a belief, reshoka le fatse, baswadi ba roda, reshoka le relwana de. Ke isapota biliena. So, in the meantime, ha ba toba gula, the project, kama rudulangatinkamo, kadi plotonka monu. There is a, ona li, the property did thing about 10 years to 20 years. How fit in that property to la property obatla, to la the owner of the property? To la the owner of the property since ya zamah, ba ma 10 years overseas. And we've got lot of the property say empty, just like a hori. Ki du fu, re le es a youth, rechonore, rebonana, rechonore, ita the projecti di film, gula the cooperative di film, or the famine za on, kalé wo, baswadi. Thank you.
Good day. My name is Sichawa Mulotan. I would like to wish all the mothers a Happy Mother's Day. I'm from Luwet Farm, and we've had a problem there during 2020 and now in 2021, where a neighbor came and bought the place next to where we are living, where there used to be a school. And there are old people who live there and the neighbor was chasing them out. We had to bring in the police, land reform, and even we got help from the EFF. We have a problem with land, especially in farms, where the white people are harassing the dwellers. Even now, there are two cases where people who have lived and grown up on the farms are being chased away. I myself have been living in this place for about 30 years. And in all these years, we have been fighting with the white people who say that the place is for pigs and not for people, and they want to chase us out. I support the bill. There are projects that have been idle for about 10 to 20 years, where we found out that the owners have left some 20, 10 years ago. And now the projects are not proceeding. We have youth that want to do these projects, that want to continue with the farming, and we need your assistance with this. I thank you.
Dumela. N'aki, kalie n'aki Lucas Malachi, from Sankoff, Ritchie. N'twa pele, kitoli dumelisa bomme ka ofela, today, retel chonore, re re Happy Mother's Day, retalaya pe la mnate. N'tweli intengi yeme lamu. Kitwalituko Apex ya mopinoni. Baba nga tabaye tsi, baba bajulamu. Apex mopinoni, bomme baronali, vontati barena, bajutimoli, from the rural places, ba tla ba tlo du lamono. Ba tla ba tlo sova iswa Daveton. Daveton i ileka 55 elefali. Rotsofa lati, rohule lati. And who da atse pisor ba tla patalo, ba twa ne bajulamoli ya bamikuku. Until today, bas antanba matari line itse no, a one n'twitzelampi, because abane moba tla save you one thing. Two, ku tla vshoku kare, ba tla face a committee idutimo. Committee idutimo ake save. And it's not a first time, retalamu. Honale kantele, YNC wulete mare, 2016, nerelitim. Committee a chenchwa chenchwa right through. And then, end of the day, the tori vita hapo, hutla committee uwe, heva lenza monu, hutla committee uwe, utolelo, ntote ni ribulela, ri sa se vita. So ya nunku, kikupuere kupangi no, karawana remo, level, the most leadership yene ilete ngaisaliyo. And amtevenitlishori, hele dutile limo, litla, the pleken kutule libulela from the nine, Ritchie niarunak ofela ya yantunga South Africa. Bonatala bompumalanga, esfo kompumalanga. Wakompumalanga, kipilampimalanga kakwa bonelisprey. You know very well, or hojuankamoli, the place iti le etifela, aholimiu, a wetwinixwa pushpa krichi. Heutama oya bo ntunga akinuku. Kukopa uya we chake leadership ne, uypenaku. Ya utena, rineliskota camp, in tevi ten. Se vita antalabusha. I'm sure resident, ilu woni limori pampiri, ilu atat, kalabusha nel kalawi woni. Kitkalabusha, ba twa ne bajutsavshoku. Baba pa kilo kariki di chips. Ta swa utola lor kremi i hai. Because limori nklumor du lande, mama keshe ni, hutla simiku. Arne pleke a olima, arne pleke arka du lati. Thank you very much.
My name is Lucas Malachi. I'm from Sankoff. Now, before I say my greetings, I would like to say to the committee that we want to wish all our mothers a Happy Mother's Day today. And we promise that we are going to cook you some delicious meals. I was born in Binoni, at Apex. I'm sure you know this Apex in Binoni. And our fathers, our mothers stayed in this particular area. And from the rurals, they were then evicted and moved at some point to Daveton. So when we got to Daveton, obviously, our kids grow in that area. We even got older in that place. And then, by the time our parents had been moved from where we were before, the place of my birth that I mentioned, they were promised some compensation. And that compensation never came to be. Even today, they are still fighting for that compensation, but it just never happened. Now, that was my point number one. My point number two is that I want to say to this committee that I'm facing here this morning, that I don't know you. I seriously don't know this committee at all. You mentioned in the beginning that you are coming from different places, different nine regions of our country or provinces. Now, that's exactly the problem we are grappling with. Because in 2016, we stood here discussing the same problem, facing, we were talking to a very different committee. Now you are a new committee. And once a new committee comes into being, the fact is that matters that were discussed in the past fall by the wayside. Now we need to start from the beginning again, discussing the same problems with new people without having those problems been solved by the previous committee. So why do you keep changing one committee after the other, one committee after the other? We don't have to be working like that at all. For an example, there is one of you who said is coming from Mpumalanga. And I've been to Mpumalanga in Nelsprey. And I'm sure you know very well, some of the lands that are barren, they are just sitting there, nothing is happening to those lands. So why can't we consider such like lands to actually put them to a good use at all? So this is exactly the problem that you are dealing with. Now, my last point, which is point number three. In Daveton, there is this squatter camp. It's a shack area which is called Kalabusha. It is well-known, we see it in the newspapers, it is written about from time to time. So that place, people are so packed together like chickens, it's difficult. And because of that, crime is escalating. So if you visit that place, you'll see exactly what I'm talking about. So, in a nutshell, we need land. Thank you very much.
...must come and talk to us and engage with us. And because this call centers is already there, I receive it's handling. And they demand a lot of money. I come from Ebast, which is a group of businesses. Pty, NGO, P, NPC, CC, all these kind of businesses. As you can see, as you can see here, I've got a, this is a bedrood juices. And we go the fat sin. The person, her own fatileu, but she, this group of people have managed to do something like this by it's a bedrood, but all this kind of food and vegetable juices, locally made, motor rosa, cattle and phosphorus. So we are basing cattle, a good themselves. So but they don't own this land, as you can see, and this, this other one, it's chili's, locally made, go cattle home. But these people don't own the land, so they're struggling with them to grow their businesses. They're struggling with them to create jobs, because land they are sever owner, and then have a better funding. But the funding application forms will tell you, no, you must have proof or you own the land or on a lease or on a agreement with the government. I wanna own that. Agreement with the government, because I wanna lease, I wanna land, I wanna title deed, I wanna next. And then we have others, besides the perfume, we have others besides the sipasalap in the same group, but local land. So these people, what sipasalap, what sipasalap, working from the garage, who says a good garage, ala the, this resources they deserve it, goes more than a car, they deserve it same. And we appreciate some of the schools for excess, where we can, where gaja la mon, so that we can do whatever we're doing for eating or for whatever product we're here. Others are doing peanuts. So occupy land for the business people, so that we can create jobs, we can also stress it, we are jobs and whatnot. So we don't have less stress when you give us land as business people. Maybe your children will be working for our, our groups or your nieces or your neighbors, whoever. So I'm here to represent the businesses, because this information gets from a business group, yet I belong to one of the political groups. Four different political, it's one political group that I belong to, but it's different groups, but it's one political. But on those group, not even a single comrade told me about how you guys are coming here to Genesee. So actually, why am I in this political group? Because they don't have information or the parliament, it, you know, expropriation here land. So instead, I got the information that you are coming from the business group, please assist the businesses, and then by closing.
My name is Mpo Taba. So my name is Mpo Taba, and then just to add to some portions that he uttered, and then he says that he's very happy, I'm happy that you are here as the parliamentarians so to come and see us and to talk to us. And yes, that's exactly what we want to see. We don't want you to be sitting in parliament and not coming to the people to come and talk to them. So you've done very well by being here, because some of your processes anyway, when you try to promote them while you are sitting in the parliament, they don't work anyway. So we need one-on-one so that we can talk about these things. So I've got some products here in my hands. One of them is a drink that has been made by one of the residents to show you that we are very serious when we say that we need land. So he made some interesting sweet concoction to come up with some drink, but they don't have a land. Can you see what they are able to accomplish? And one of them is chili's in a bottle. Now, this has been made by the person without having a land. So you can imagine these things need some land to be able to produce them. So some of them have been trying to get the land so that they can actually grow this particular business, but they've been asked to produce a lease or a title deed or some form of a permit, and they don't have it. So it's difficult then to actually help them to make progress with these things which they want to do. So as you can see, they seriously need to, to have some land. There is one other resident who actually is busy making washing soap. And some of these schools have been, no, sorry, he's making this washing soap from somebody's garage. So he collects some working implements, and then he, he makes it the, the way they know how, but they are working from a garage. It would have been very nice if they had some piece of a land where they could freely work and actually explore their potential by coming up with these things. Now, some schools have been very considerate and very kind by actually allowing us to access a piece of land in their yard so that we can actually do some production. Again, this is, this is an indication that we definitely need a land, not some makeshift form of working, but wanting to produce big things as we are doing here. So this will help us. We, we agree with the bill, we need land, this will help us, because if we don't, if we are not able to make progress in these matters, we're gonna have a lot of stress, and we are going to go out onto the street and start toy-toying. So please give us the land so that we can give event to our stress into this particular beautiful work that we want to do. Thank you, Chair.
Good day. My name is Tembega Christofas. I am from Ward 35. I can see we're out of time, I won't be long. A former mayor took some people together and registered them so that they would be given houses, flats that were built. The flats were duly built, but now the people that are staying in those flats are not the ones that were registered. Can you please tell us who these people are and how this came to be? There are other empty flats in our area that are being vandalized, and we would like to know how we can have access to them, because we would like to, yes, use them too. Secondly, there is also a flat in Germiston that is vacant, flats that are vacant that are being vandalized. And when we ask about them, we are told that they are, they have a private owner, owned by a private company. We would like to know to whom these flats belong so that we can run our businesses in them. And finally, I'd like to point out that many houses are being occupied by foreigners, and they are not taken to task for this. But whenever we do such things, the law is after us. So we want to know, but who are the ones who vote? Why is it that we do not have any rights? It's a very painful thing that we are experiencing. Thank you.
Afternoon. My name is Gawata Bello from Watsebendio. Sprints, I am representing the people of Neva Neva, who ruthlessly evicted in the informal settlement, established in 1994 in the government unity. Actually, it is so disappointing for the black people now and every day. Everything that they want, they must fight, then the police must shoot them with the rubber bullet. It is so disappointing that we fight together for this country to have a land, which means we still, the poverty, the inequalities is still going to increase, because how, how, how can a government protect those private land that is owned by, 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 by the white people? We don't discriminate, but let be fairness, where I am from, informal settlement, the municipality is protecting, is protecting the private land that people were occupied, because those people, the owner of that, of, of that place in Sprints, next to, in Sprints, never, never informal settlement, next to Sprints market, fresh produce market. So he said he don't have a problem. Those people, they live under a severe condition of which, in the severe conditions, they can be there because they are under the trees, and then they have agreed with that owner that they can expand. But the municipality, when they expand, they come in COVID-19, it was June last year in COVID-19, they evict those people, they, they destroy their shares illegally in COVID-19 with their kids. Just imagine that, that our own government now they are, they are protecting the land, because it is so disappointing to stand here every day, and then I don't know if the government wants us to kneel down with our knee begging for land that is belong to us. That was taken from us in a vicious way, killing and sacking the blood of our people. It is so wrong. Let be fairness, the land must be distributed. We are, we are tired of empty promises. We are living, now we paying rent in our own land, we are threatened to be evicted by the same government. No, that is wrong. Righteousness should be fulfilled to the people. We, we are tired of seeking land that is, that is belong to us. People were taken from their, their land, their fertile land, and they're taken to the mountain. Now, why it is always issue when a black people demand free? Because we don't want to protest, but the government forced us to protest every time, and then now we, we must battle, then, which means the government now is protecting that that land, because if it is not protecting, I don't see any reason to be here today seeking the land. Because in 1994, it was established, it, 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 lending from egg, but why now? It's 2021, 27 years, people don't have land. That, that must come to an end. And if, 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 if the government is still going to suppress the people by shooting them with the rubber bullet, by threatening them or jail them, then it is wrong. That, that government, then, I don't see any importance that he is doing, because they forget that we as the voters, we send them in the parliament to present our needs and demands, then, as a result, they only come with vote. When they need vote, they come, they bribe us with food. We don't know, we don't want this fee, we want land so that we will be equal economically, and then there will not be inequality. That fee must come to an end. Thanks.
Freddie Ramudou from Ward 21, what committee? Can maybe, the blue lady, the blue lady, we are go far far back, and Babo Lele Nait. Eh, kehale, rubulela kayo na tava here. Mara, kebona ukare, government de arona, iyo ama udu. The more low ama udu is the more the councilor jarona, di ba matadrii. But Baba wa ketilei, Baba na ukare di councilors, ali berek, and the councilors, dia berek. Uri, di councilor ali telefono berek, kebekehobela or tava ye ya land. Please, I pass. Si chabase, di councilor ali telefono shoma, let's chabase this for not to be councilor. That's why the councilors, renalinto la or the councilors, di jiliabona, dia blayu ama disha. Ke baka, lauri, arena di black. Okay, kehobela ulala something. More like do la more watu ndua. I'm sure lile la di boona modi ma tivi, onalongo ana ilena wala garachat. And then renalumo sadua ilena liena, awala kori uile aduji, kwa ama gauzi. Abona mofas o saag, guruno saaga ana bayi, and I say jadi. Which means black more do you mojoni, ali right. Kuhobela lena esee government, ke ala respecta ne? Kuhobela or elitza mama, lele wa bojo godi moko. Uri, rena mofas, we are not here kalona, reliketilemurele be godi. Kuhobela or please, guys, elitza mama, pull up your socks. Rinyaka, landri, iwo ya batu, retaruguleboz, narakateji, uli ala magundwa. Ikeza ma ki amere ko, ko boyaki grakastro, iuweile, and kebeki siile grigile di pisis, kacha la di ama fene. Magundwa na li, ali di pisis, na kisa droali di pisis. Kuhobela or please, guys, please, ke ala kuhobela, ibile kuhobela li, meraroona, Mr. Mzandile Masina, ah, wana udisa parliamente, moji misten, ke tava jeli bozi, lele na, please, ke ala kuhobela, let's kala chawa, uta uwea mori, napi apen ne? Letalu boye, ke tava jeli boz, kumushmo boz olu diran, ke ala kuhobela. Amen.
Good day. My name is Freddie Ramukru from Ward 21, and I'm a Ward Committee member. As the different speakers have spoken, I have shown their different opinions, this issue has been long outstanding, and this means that the government is working slow. And as the government is working slowly, it brings the councillors into trouble, because the public has a belief that the, the councillors are not doing their jobs. We need you to please pass this land bill as the councillors can do the work. Many of them are being killed because they seem not to be doing their work. Where I stay, a child died, and also a woman, because the land where they were staying was not stable. The lady just saw the land in front of her sink, and there was nothing she could do. I would want, I would like you to tell the authorities from where you are come, from where you are coming from, that we are not happy about you, you need to pull up your socks, we need the land back, we are tired of living with rats. When I go to work, when I come back in the afternoon, I find that the rats have eaten my food, which I bought with my last money, and I'm tired of living under those circumstances. I would like to thank Zondile Masina for bringing parliament to us, and I would like to say to you, do not be afraid to come back, we welcome you to this place. Thank you.
Good day. My name is Sinlovu from Ward 74, under the Economic Freedom Fighters. As the Economic Freedom Fighters in Ward 74, we second the amendment of section 25 of the constitution of the country to the expropriation of land without compensation. Honestly, as an individual, I don't understand why you are back here. You came here, this is not the first time, hopefully you're not gonna come for the next time or the last time or whatever time, because really you are wasting the resources that were being told are not there as a country. We see the status quo of the country, our people are suffering. Instead of you coming here to, 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 to request us or to hear from us what we have told you before, because really what we are saying to you now, and what we have said to you before, take those resources and use them, metallize them to the poor masses. I mean, in, in my ward, in Ward 74, we've got two informal settlements that were, was established in 1994. Both of those settlements, there are no developments. We've got Eku Tuleni that was supposed to, to, to be built, 409 units of RTP houses, but only 84 of those houses were built. Where the rest of those houses, people are yet about to kill each other there because of those houses. There was the land that was promised in Refontaine that the overflow of that settlement will go there, but today we are being told that that land does not exist anymore. What is happening? Why are you fooling, fooling our people like this? We've got never, never. Also, that settlement is a very old settlement. I mean, no one is coming in to rescue of those people. It is not really nice. People said then, let us go and occupy that other piece of land, because really our lives are at danger here. Bahamba ba yo occupy Alapo, the municipality came, since they've established their land invasion unit. They shut people, they brutalized people, it does not make sense why? Because the only thing that those people they need is the land. Why are you not giving back the land to the people? Apart from the land supports the wildlife, because that's what you think as the black nation we need the land for. Unfortunately, there are other factors that are being supported by the land that we need. 95% of our basic needs involves agriculture, transportation, communication activities, and shelter. Those factors are all obtained from the land. We say, give the land back to the people. amend section 25. It's been long now, we are tired of saying the same thing. amend section 25 to expropriation of land without compensation. That's it. Thank you.
I will, I will only add two sentences, which were in Sizulu. Trees are falling, were falling on some of people's houses, therefore people decided that they will try and occupy other land where trees won't fall on them, on their houses. Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Tabo Bembe. I am from Ward 44, eh, Phosloras. I am a member of Ward Committees. I have two, I have two submissions, the land theft and the force removal are the reasons that makes me support the expropriation of land without compensation, I submit.
Good day. My name, my name is Tabo Makobe from Sidi Bang region, place called Three Rivers. I represent a Makobe family, and we support the expropriation of land without compensation, mainly because the first invaders of our family land, which is situated on the banks of the Val River, they came with family structures, ancient stone structures, that has been there long before any boat came to our land, or any visitor, or any foreigner from Europe. And they came and dispossessed our direct ancestors of their land and changed the names of the places. Today, we have their graves that we can visit, but in order to get in, they threaten us, they tell us, no, listen, you are trespassing into our farms. Today, as I'm speaking, stretches of the river, others are saying that it's privately owned, and the issue that is, that I see is happening is that people assume that we want to expropriate land because of only agriculture and farming, and it is assumed that once black people talk about taking back of their rightful, their land to the rightful owners, we're talking about farms here. There is more to South Africa than just farms and farming and agriculture. Even cities are sitting on the land of rightful owners. We support expropriation because land is not the first time land has been expropriated. The first expropriation happened when people came, dispossessed land from its rightful owners, murdered, and not only stole their wealth, stole even their identity by grouping them together into little pockets, which are still like that till today. And we cannot take pride in saying, no, we must first see how we accommodate, they didn't accommodate us. And we must actually be happy that the government of today is coming and saying, let us consult with the people on the ground and hear what they have to say and work on what we are hearing from the people. This is not what was happening before. And those that are still, that, that are beneficiaries of stolen property, they expect us to come and say, no, what about a private property rights? If this land can go back? I thank you. See ya, Bongo.
Thank you again, all the speakers, from the first speaker to the last speaker. We are taking all your views. And where the views relate to another department? Like land claims? We will then refer them to the Department of Rural Development and Land Reform. Where it affects the municipality? We will also inform the relevant municipality. We agree that the land issue in South Africa is very crucial. We also agree that it has been, it has been a long process before it has been resolved. So please bear with our government. As it is trying to repeal these acts of the previous government. See ya, Bongo, single mama of this group, this portfolio committee?
Thank you as the woman of this portfolio committee, we like to thank you.
On all the messages wishing us a Happy Mother's Day. And as such, on behalf of the committee? I am also saying to all the mothers here, Happy Mother's Day. We are now going to close the meeting. And again, we thank you for all your contributions. Please stay safe. COVID-19 is still out there. Observe all the health protocols. The meeting is adjourned.